Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation given by Councilmember Byakowski and silence your electronic devices so that we can conduct our basis.
Before I go forward with the invocation, I'd just like everyone to remember that yesterday was Patriot Day. It's been 20 years. Just under 3,000 people were killed in the terror attacks in New York, Arlington, Virginia, Shanksville, Pennsylvania. I personally had a relative working in the Pentagon, thank God. She got out of there. I had several friends in there. And it was quite an experience. Coming into Batavia yesterday, Redfield Parkway had flags all down the parkway. The entrance to the VA had all their flags out. And then the VA put out almost 3,000 flags on the lawn. And I think that was the real experience, seeing all these flags on the lawn in neat rows, realizing how many people lost their lives. Before I read the invocation, I'd just like to read this, and it's from Sandy Dahl. She's a wife of Pilot Jason Dahl, who lost his life. And she said, "If we had learned nothing else from this tragedy, we learn that life is short, and there's no time for hate." So bow our heads, please. O God, our hope and refuge, in our distress we come quickly to you. Shock and horror, that tragic day have subsided, replaced now with an emptiness, a longing for an innocence lost. We come remembering those who lost their lives in New York, Washington, Pennsylvania. We are mindful of the sacrifice of public servants who demonstrated the greatest love of all by laying down their lives for friends. We commit their souls to your eternal care, celebrate their gifts to a following humanity. We come remembering, and we come in hope, not in ourselves but in you. As foundations we once thought secure have been shaken, we are reminded of the illusion of security. In commemorating this tragedy, we give you thanks for your presence in our time of need, and we seek to worship you in spirit and in truth, our guard and our garden. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to thank Councilmember Cannelli for allowing me this honor to do the prayer tonight because he was scheduled to do it, and we switched. So, thank you, John. I appreciate it.
That'll work. I know it did too when you asked, and I knew you had something special prepared.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comments?
Very nice.
Okay, if you signed up to speak about the animals, I would request that you would hold that for the public hearing. And then specifically in that, if you have something other than the animals and you want to still speak, now would be the time if you've signed up in advance. Is there anyone that wants to speak during the regular meeting for something other than animals? Okay, so John Roach, call him up.
John Roach, please.
As he's walking up, I'll set up the rules. All speakers should have signed up in advance with the city clerk. Each speaker will please use the podium. Please state your name and address before beginning your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. The council will not engage in debate with the speaker. First bell means you have 30 seconds left. Second bell is your time up, and I'm going to have to stop because we have a lot of people that want to speak.
John Roach, Grand View Terrace. I only had two questions. I was wondering if we could get an update on the IT program. It's been a while since we've heard how well that's going. Quite a bit of tax money to bring everything back up to par. And I was kind of curious. I was told the cameras, security cameras in the building work. Did you discover who did the vandalism at the last meeting? And if so, did you ticket them or anything? Or was I wrong and the cameras don't work and you haven't got a clue?
Hey, John.
Thank you very much.
Address the council next time around. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Counsel response to public comments? Any other questions that Mr. Roach talked about? Okay. Communications?
Yes, I have a few. The first is the bid walk, which is scheduled for Saturday, October 1st, from 4:00 to 8:00. We'll be going down in the around the downtown area for wine tastings.
Any questions or concerns on that one?
Yeah, I, thank you, Mr. President. I just, the only concern I had, and I've heard this, I answered the years with wine walks and stuff, what measures can be a place to keep people from leaving premises with alcohol and walking down the city sidewalk?
They don't. They're not allowed, the last I knew, they weren't allowed to leave the business without depositing it. They have like a trash thing there, and they have to either finish it up before they leave or they're going to have to throw it away, and they can't walk on the street with any alcohol.
The wine walk and those who have the tasting have to have it inside the venue where the special liquor license or venue licenses.
So it's up to the business owners. Thank you.
And they do a very good job of it.
Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, next one.
St. Paul Lutheran Church Craft and Dunder Fair is scheduled for Saturday, October 15th, from 10:00 to 3:00 in the City Center Conference.
Any questions or concerns on that one?
Can I just quickly ask, what are the costs for the public works for the, those two there, St. Paul's and Ever Present Church?
Sure. St. Paul is, the estimated cost for public works is between $130 and $160. There's no other cost from the park. Ever Present Church, the estimated cost for public works is $357.28, to be exact.
Can you, what's the cost for?
The cost is for overtime, if we need to bring in personnel to unlock the facility or to do any staging for the event. And we bill it back to the event organizer. Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, the next one.
Ever Present Church is having a fall festival on Saturday, October 22nd, from 4:00 to 8:00 in the City Center Conference.
Questions or concerns on that one? Okay, and the last one.
The YWCA is having a 5K on Saturday, October 15th, from 8:30 until 1:00 PM at 301 North Street. And it's for awareness of survivors that possess violence.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay. The next city council conference meeting will be held Monday, September 26th, 2022, 7:00 PM, City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. Now a motion to open the public hearing. Mr. Beal, second to by Mr. Byakowski. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beal?
Yes.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cannelli?
Yes.
Councilmember McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Council President Jankowski?
Yes.
So, public hearing is now open. All speakers should have signed up in advance. Please state your name before beginning your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. The difference between this and the others is you must comment on the reason of the public hearing, which is the animals. So as long as you have an animal statement, you can do that. Your first bell means you have 30 seconds left. The second bell, your time is up, and I'm going to have to kind of end it, so kind of wrap it up. Call our first person, please.
Kathy Schwank, 8811 Hartshorn Road, Corfue, New York. And I'm here to speak on the proposed amendment that states no person shall own, keep, harbor, or feed feral cats. I'm a member of Volunteers for Animals. I have been for the last 18 years. I'm also the coordinator for Spay or Strays, which is a low-cost spay-neuter program for feral and outdoor cats. And our group humanely sterilizes and vaccinates cats throughout Genesee County, including in the city of Batavia. Since the inception of Spay or Strays in 2008, I've had countless experiences dealing with our community cats and their caregivers. Many of these cats have extremely responsible caregivers who have taken it upon themselves to go through programs such as ours. The cats are trapped, neutered, vaccinated, and returned, or in some cases relocated. The caregivers did not ask for these cats. They are compassionate, caring, humans who cannot bear to see animals suffering. Some of them are in the audience right now. These community cats should not be punished for the deeds of one citizen who irresponsibly harbors farm animals on their city property and infringes on their neighbors' rights. By including feral cats in the same category as farm animals, this is going to ensure undue suffering and spread disease among our own community cats. So because of this proposed amendment, I've had several people, several upstanding city residents, contact me fearing that they will not be able to legally care for their outdoor cats anymore. Some of these cats are strays, some are semi-socialized, others have just been thoughtlessly left behind like a piece of trash, and these compassionate people are caring for them. The good Samaritan that has used our program is now devastated. These community cats have become part of the family, they're cared for, they're loved. Community members are now fearful of potential fines or even criminality. What does the city propose we do with the current community cat population if this law is put into effect? Where do they go? What do you do? Okay, that's a huge, huge problem. According to the ASPCA, feeding bans, ordinances, and policies are misguided, ineffective, and inhumane. Feeding bans don't work, and they're not scientifically supported, period. The logic behind feeding bans is if there's no food available, the cats will go away. This is simply not true and only makes the issues worse. Feeding bans encourage cats to roam farther to find food, making them more visible and more problematic. Discontinuing cats' food sources cruel, makes cats more susceptible to disease, and leads to visible deaths of cats and kittens. Scientific studies show that trap, neuter, vaccinate, return is the preferred method of managing community cats. Several years ago, Assistant City Manager Gretchen DeFonte assembled the Community Cat Steering Committee. I was on that, as well as Dr. Carolyn Kakamas, Animal Control Officer Anne Marie Brady, a representative from the Health Department, and our findings led us to endorse trap, neuter, vaccinate, and return for the city of Batavia. Prevention strategies and education that address community cat issues should be encouraged rather than punishing the people who seek to help them. Volunteers for Animals and Spay or Strays asks the city to reject cruel, punitive, and ineffective ordinances, and instead embrace humane, non-lethal programs like trap, neuter, vaccinate, and return, and other low-cost spay and neuter programs. Community cats are a very complex issue and should not be integrated in your proposal with farm animals. They don't belong there. We should not be punishing innocent animals for the actions of unthinking people. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Wendy Castleman?
Hi. My name is Wendy Castleman. I live at 162 South Main Street here in Batavia. I've been a resident here over 30 years. I'm also a volunteer at Volunteer for Animals at the Genesee County Animal Shelter, and I've been there for over 20 years. We are requesting that all references to feral cats in the proposed legislation be removed. Community cat population management is a complex issue that cannot be addressed humanely in a generic proposal. Community cat populations themselves are complex. They are not solely comprised of feral cats. They are made up of feral cats, semi-socialized cats, and lost and abandoned pets. This proposal would promote a do-nothing approach, i.e., references to do-not-feeding and sheltering, which would result in ever-increasing community cat population. According to the American Society of the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, denying food in shelters is not only inhumane, but will not effectively help reduce colony populations. It would also appear to directly violate New York State Ag and Market Law. This law states that any person that deprives any animal wild or tame of necessary sustenance, like food and water, can be found guilty of a misdemeanor Class A. New York State law further states that feeding bans are ineffective at decreasing cat populations. It acknowledges that many community cats have come to be dependent on food provided by caregivers, and that a feeding ban would be inhumane as it forces cats to subsist on insufficient resources. The management of community cat populations cannot be addressed in a one-size-fits-all proposal. It is a complex issue that requires the cooperation of municipal entities, animal welfare groups, and concerned caregivers. The most effective humane approach to reducing community cat populations is through trap, neuter, vaccinate, and release. New York State law acknowledges this, as well as other animal organizations across the world. There are a number of local groups that also assist in currently, currently assist in our area that implement trap, neuter, vaccinate, and release, such as Spay or Strays, Feral Cat Focus, and Cat by Cat. As the community cat population is not made up of all ferals, these groups have been instrumental in helping find homes for cats that are adoptable as pets and also as working cats for businesses and barns. A trap, neuter, vaccinate, release approach stops reproducing through spay and neuter, reduces and eliminates disease potential through vaccination, and if cared for, causes less problems in general. The community cat populations decrease over time due to attrition. As the ASPCA so eloquently states, "Community cats exist because of generations of human action and inaction." Therefore, humanely addressing the needs of these cats and implementing programs which help prevent their reproduction are the responsibility of the communities in which we live. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marcy Calantonio, 8966 Rager Road, Stafford. Also speaking on behalf of Volunteers for Animals, we oppose the inclusion of feral cats in your amendment regarding farm animals in the city. Under Section 350 of New York State Agricultural Markets Law, feral cats are considered companion animals and are protected by animal cruelty provisions. Cruelty includes the deprivation of food and water, whether the cat belongs to oneself or to the person caring for the animal. Under New York State law, feral cats cannot be treated as wildlife or wild animals, nuisance or not. Under Section 350-5 of the Markets Law, companion animals shall not include farm animals. Therefore, is our standing that your amendment regarding farm animals should not include feral cats. Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd?
Todd Vark is the last thing.
Thank you.
Although I approach the microphone. Can you hear me through the microphone? My name is Todd Vark. I work at Independent Living of the Genesee Region at 319 West Main Street in Batavia. I'm the Chief Policy Officer for West New York Independent Living, which is the organization that runs Independent Living of the Genesee Region. We oppose the passage of this legislation because it doesn't contain the required protections for some animals protected under federal law. In specific, your law bans horses when the Americans for Disabilities Act and New York State Human Rights Law specifically allow miniature horses to be given the same protection as service animals, which would normally otherwise be considered dogs. In addition, the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 has amended Section 504, requires that you protect the rights of homeowners to have companion animals in their homes. Companion animals are allowed to be any domesticated animal. We believe that this places the law in significant jeopardy. And based on some of the things I've heard, I do want to make sure that you guys know that the sense of home rule in this case, that is, you can write any law for any purpose you want, isn't necessarily absolute when it comes to laws that may violate federal or state prerogatives. Remember, this is protected, these animals are protected under the Americans for Disabilities Act and New York State Human Rights Law. So you would have someone who has a miniature horse that might be used for guiding or support in the town of Batavia, that resident wouldn't be able to keep that animal anymore. We have advised a modification to the law to cover that contingency. So we sincerely hope that the council takes that into consideration and modifies the law accordingly. Thank you.
Judy Sikora, 32 Park Avenue, and I've lived in Batavia for four years. And I am here to support the comments made by Kathy Schwank and the members of Volunteers for Animals. They've, I don't think that feral cats should be included in this code change, your code In our neighborhood, we've, over the years, a number of feral cats have chosen us. We haven't invited them, but they have appeared, and I've been able to work with Kathy to get them spayed, neutered, vaccinated. And after a while, well, some of them, they become tame enough that we can take them to the shelter. The Volunteers for Animals are, you're great. You've done a lot of really great work. And very often, we can take them, they get adapted, and, but occasionally, they do remain very wild, and, but we work together in our neighborhood to feed them, take care of them, and make sure that they don't have more kittens. And so I would like to encourage you to remove this from your, from your board. Thank you.
My name is John Ladd. I live at 31 Burke Drive, right next to the Turner residence. August 10th, August 12th, August 13th, August 19th, August 21st, August 24th, August 25th, August 26th, August 28th, August 29th, September 1st, September 2nd, September 3rd, September 4th, September 7th, September 11th. These dates that I just read for you are the dates in which I was able to collect either picture and/or video evidence of the goats and chickens roaming freely out of their enclosures since the last city council meeting on August 8th. One particular video from August 21st shows a goat standing on my side porch, eating one of my bushes. What might seem humorous at first soon turns to anger with the destruction of my property. Now let me be clear, we do not want limits on farm animals. We want no such animals allowed in the city limits. Presumably, since there was nothing on the books regarding these sorts of animals being allowed in the city, past city councils had not thought or even been presented with a situation to have to act upon. For this city council, however, that situation is now. I'm sure part of the thought process was in some respect, who would want farm animals in the city? I know, based strictly on anecdotal evidence, that no city resident I have talked to is in favor of these kinds of animals being allowed in the city. Furthermore, they do not understand how this is currently taking place. Which brings me to the emotional support animal aspect of this situation. Who is to say that at some point, a city resident decides he needed a cow or a giraffe as an emotional support animal? Is that possible? Is it legal? The Americans with Disabilities Act does not cover emotional support animals. The Fair Housing Act has some reasonable accommodations, but the emotional and/or physical benefits come from the animal living in the home. That's what qualifies the animal as a support animal. Now, Mr. Van Ness would be able to speak to this more than I. But at some point, the rights of the neighbors and the neighborhood as a whole must factor in. Our rights are just as important as the rights of the household in question. So I would say that the city is no place for these types of animals. When you live in the city, you have a reasonable expectation of what that entails. Things such as houses close together, automobile traffic, and the sounds of sirens coming from first responder vehicles come to mind. Nowhere in that expectation is the thought of having to deal with farm animals. Let me say that a ban on farm animals is not a ban on emotional support animals. In this case, I do not believe that these animals would qualify as emotional support animals because they do not live in the residence, according to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Also, there are a number of diseases that goats, ducks, and chickens can transmit to humans. One in particular is avian flu. Although animal-to-human transmission is not common, it has happened. According to the CDC, one way to infect humans is from droplets in the air or possibly dust. Illness in humans from bird flu virus infections have ranged in severity from no symptoms or mild illness to severe disease that resulted in death. Does this sound familiar? The CDC website states, and I quote, "Because of the possibility that bird flu could change and gain the ability to spread easily between people, monitoring for human infection and person-to-person spread is extremely important for public health. Considering what the world has gone through the last three years and continues to deal with, that should give us all something to ponder." Thank you.
Robin Lewis. I live at 16818 Ridge Road, Holly, New York, 14470. I'm a member of Volunteers for Animals, and I have fostered cats and kittens for many years. First, cats are not farm animals, any more than are dogs, pet ferrets, doves, et cetera. Though you may find them on a farm, they are not husbanded, contained within fencing, et cetera, breedings planned and regulated as are farm animals, nor are they wild animals. This species was brought to North America by immigrants from Europe. All the cats in the city came originally from ownership by people, no matter how many generations back. There is really no easy way to tell a feral cat from a neighbor's pet cat from a short-term or long-term stray. Unfortunately, a lot of people don't keep their pet indoors, nor do they call them in every night. There can be, they can be out there quite a while and still be someone's pet. It's been seen throughout the country that the best way to control feral cats is through TNVR programs, trap, neuter, vaccinate, release, that maintain a healthy community feral cat population with the help of dedicated caregivers. Healthy, well-fed, sterilized cats are rarely a nuisance. In a caregiving situation, newly arrived cats can be trapped and sterilized. Cats showing illness can be given care or removed to maintain the health of the group. They actually perform community service by reducing the population of mice, et cetera. The healthier the cats, the better hunters they may be. Demonizing stray cats and forbidding people to care for them will not, will not solve the problem, but will actually increase the numbers of stray kittens born and the numbers of unhealthy and suffering cats in the city. I truly hope that this portion regarding feral cats will be removed. It is a cruel, inhumane, ineffective way to solve a complex problem that should be dealt with separately. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Patrabowski, and I live at 27 Burke Drive, right next door to where the farm animals are. I'm here to ask and urge you to please vote for this proposed ordinance, and I will share with you some of my reasons and circumstances why. with you some of my reasons and circumstances why. First of all, the smell. The smells and odors that come from 29 Burke Drive are horrendous, and something that one should not have to experience in a residential zone in the area in the city of Batavia. The neighbor claims the hay is changed once a week, although I'm not sure that's true. However, with the many farm animals coupled with the multiple cats and dogs she has, it doesn't take long for an extremely unpleasant stench to occur and travel through our neighborhood. In addition, with the 80 to 90 degree temperatures we had for a good part of the summer, you can only imagine how offensive the smell can be. This is, I can't enjoy my front or back yard by myself or family and friends out of fear for my safety and health. Two, bugs and critters. With all the animals next door, there's been a definite increase in the bugs and insects flying around, and critters, including a coyote, are running around. With everything she has placed right along my property line, I am negatively affected by this. Three, noise. The noise that comes from this property is also very annoying and disturbing. You hear dogs, cats, ducks, goats, and chickens throughout the day and night. Four, roaming. The neighbors' goats, chickens, dogs, cats, and dogs are constantly left free to roam around all over the neighborhood. I could fill a DVD with the videos and pictures of them in my yard, front and back, as well as other neighbors' yards. The two big goats came into my garage one day when I came home grocery shopping. I was putting the bags on my stoop, and then they came, and they're huge goats, and they went, traveled right to the back of my garage. I called the police, but fortunately, my neighbor across the street videoed this, and he came over and rescued me by shooing them out of there. They eat my flowers and plants, her dogs and cats defecate in the yard and all over the neighborhood and dig up flower beds. I had to remove bushes and shrubs last year because of the cat urine, as they use our yards as their litter box. One of the dogs recently went across the street and bit another neighbor. This neighbor has gone a good portion every day, and these animals roam freely and make noise. Their yard does not provide enough adequate space for farm animals. It isn't fair to them either. There's no control over there. She is not a considerate neighbor, and she's an irresponsible animal owner. Five, fear. Because of the size of the goats, there's a definite fear factor here. I take care of my young grandson and have a medium-sized dog. If these goats decided to charge at us, they could cause us to have some very serious injuries or worse. To preserve my sanity and safety, I incurred a major expense last summer to put up a six-foot vinyl fence along that side of my property. The goats could easily have jumped over my four-foot chain fence that used to be there. Even my poor dog can't enjoy the fenced-in backyard. Six, harassment and attack. The verbal abuse I've had to endure is unconscionable. The neighbor and her young daughter yell and scream vulgarities at me when I come out of my house or when they drive by in their car. At 10 o'clock one night, she and her daughter were coming home, and I was in my front yard. She began to speed up and laid on her horn, raced her car around the bend of the street, and then came back to her driveway. Another night, another neighbor, she became upset because another neighbor was talking to me in my front yard. She had her young daughter lay on the car horn. They brought out a boombox and played in full blast, recorded the rooster sound, and it kept playing it over and over, threw firecrackers around, and then started a fire that came very close to their house and car. Last August, this neighbor unprovoked, and because she was mad that I put up the vinyl fence and I didn't want farm animals there, attacked a lady who mows my lawn. She came at her and threw rocks at her, and then she hit her with a pipe on the back of her leg and caused a welt, and I have a picture if anybody wants to see it. And the police were called, and she told the police that she just lost her temper. So, it just is terrible. None of these animals are service, supporter, comfort animals. She and her minor daughter have no problem. She's screaming obscenities at me and whipping both their middle fingers at me without any animal beside them. In conclusion, I bought my house in 2006, and of what exists and goes on next door at the present time, I would never have purchased my house back then. I do not have quiet enjoyment of my own property. Our property values have gone down, and no one would buy my house. Why would they? I thank you. I do have, Mr. President, there was a message I got from one of the neighbors who can't be here tonight, and it said that my grandson has a football game that we're going to. I'm not sure if this text will hold up with city council, but this craziness has gone on far too long, and it needs to stop. The Lefanera family at 15 Burke Drive is in support of this and the ordinance to eliminate farm animals within the city of Batavia. Thank you.
Yes, Lucas Patrabowski.
My name is Lucas Patrabowski. I, uh, sorry, I'm Lucas Patrabowski. I'm the son of Teresa Patrabowski. I have witnessed for myself the incompetence of, and just laziness of not having the animals contained. It's just sickening, and I even had to shoo away the animals myself. And I don't like to see my mom in danger or my nephew in danger. It's just utterly ridiculous. It needs to stop now.
Shannon Maude.
Hi, my name is Shannon Maude, and I live at 22 Burke Drive in Batavia. I just have a few quick statements to give my opinion on the goats and the ducks and the chickens. I grew up going to the country, and I loved it, but I always hated the smell. So when I purchased a house, I chose to live in the city so I would not have to smell it. I now live in a neighborhood that smells like a farm, and trust us, it smells really bad. The animals are not kept properly. They don't have proper fencing. The chickens do not even have a coop that I have seen. They're always roaming free. They're fed in the front yard, and then they go eat and then wander around everyone else's yard. They cross the street. They're everywhere. Since Thursday, I've chased one goat, three chickens, and one dog out of our neighborhood. It's tiresome. By the way, chickens are not always friendly, so don't try it at home. But I, I'm just tired of it. I would like to live in the city. I would like to be comfortable outside. I would like to not be woken up to ducks quacking at 6:00 in the morning, and I just would like to enjoy my house and my outside and not smell the farm. And as for the service animals, I am not against any animal. I love all animals. I want to see them well taken care of, and I think service animals are fantastic. These goats, these ducks, these chickens that people have are not service animals. These are just farm animals that they are housing in their yards. That is it. Thank you.
Jennifer Reed.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Reed, who live at 8 Wood Street, here in the city. On the flip side of everybody complaining about the chickens, on May 20th of 2020, I actually did a lot of research and looked into chickens and see what the code and ordinances were in the city of Batavia before I purchased my chickens. And then I went to a hattery in Clifton Springs where I purchased some chickens. And unfortunately, two of the chickens I got, when they were babies, I was told were hens, and of course, they turned out to be roosters. So being responsible, I quickly found my little roosters new homes and got two ladies instead. But I enjoy my chickens, and I'm, it terrifies me that I might have to get rid of my chickens because someone is irresponsible and is not taking care of their animals. So take people like me into consideration who do take very good care of their animals and love them. Thank you.
Hello. Bring it down a little bit. My name is Linda Davio, and I live at 16 Park Avenue, Batavia. I want to thank your council members for taking the time to listen to us. I read online about the concerns of a few residents on Burke Drive, about the goats that are being raised by one of their homeowners. I understand the concerns of those residents, but I am worried that the council might be considering changes in our city laws that would place restrictions on others who live in Batavia. I hope that you will not be legislating for the worst common denominator and in effect be punishing all citizens for the concerns of a few. What is happening on Burke Drive appears to be a worst-case scenario. I will confess, my primary concern is for the welfare of the feral cats around the city. We have two feral cats we feed and care for. They are two sisters who were born in our neighborhood. They were cared for by my neighbor who moved and just left them. So we have cared for them now for about seven years. We felt we couldn't leave them to their own devices, so we basically adopted them. We've taken them to the vet and had them spayed. They got their shots. We feed them a good diet. They've never known human contact, so we can't actually handle them per se, but we feel very attached to them. I would hate to see helpless animals basically punished for circumstances beyond their control. When I was young, our neighbor used to get two lambs every summer from a local farmer, and at the end of the summer, when they had grown, she would return them to the farmer. And the house two doors down from the corner of Northern State raised horses when I was young. Granted, that was a while ago. But my point is, there are responsible citizens out there who would care for animals in the city. Why should all of Batavia be punished for the concerns of a few? Couldn't the city be working with those Burke Drive residents to resolve their issue at hand without creating unnecessary restrictive laws that in effect punish the majority for the actions of a few? Thank you.
Randy Turner.
Randy, here. Randy Turner, 29 Burke Drive. About three years ago, I was dumbfounded that the city of Batavia didn't have an ordinance for farm animals. I just couldn't believe it. They have an ordinance for everything, but there was, police came and they said there's nothing they can do about it. So then, I think back in January or February, Mr. Jankowski, I read an article in the paper that he brought up there were no address possibly having farm animals in the city, which I thought was a good thing. Then one of the first things I saw was an article in the paper, well, if they ban farm animals, what do they do about horses and other animals being transported through the city? Well, the simple answer is nothing. That has nothing to do with what we're talking about. Centennial Park, they've had petting zoos there, they've had pony rides, they've had horse and carriage rides at Christmas in the city. Again, that really has nothing to do with what we're talking about here. What we're talking about is farm animals in the city. And just for volunteers for animals, I mean, dogs and cats might be considered farm animals, but they're also considered city animals. I'd bet 75% of the people in Batavia have either a dog or a cat. So I don't think that has anything to do with what we're talking about here. Over on Redfield Parkway, they have to deal with the horse smell over there, but when you buy a house there, you know what you're getting into. It's a commercial area, a commercial business. Even though Redfield Parkway is one of the more prestigious streets in the city, I guess, you know what you're getting into when you move there, or at least you should. And as far as I'm concerned, there's just no reason to have farm animals in the city. They do cause a problem, the smell, and flies, things like that. I think it's a little blown out of proportion how much the animals are loose around here, but I'm not home all the time, so I don't really know. But I think dogs and cats are fine for city residents. I don't think there's any place for goats, ducks, chickens, geese, anything of that type. Hopefully, council will take that into consideration and do something about it. Thank you.
Okay, if anyone didn't sign up, being at this a public hearing, if you want to speak, let me know. You can come up and speak up.
John Rochel, I'm on Grandview Terrace. I support this new code. We've already had it explained that the ADA is not an issue. The city attorney explained that at the last meeting. We've also had it explained that other agencies that were, we were told could handle these issues, can't. That seemed to be pretty well cleared up. I agree with some people that have said, you want a farm animal, move to the farms. This is a city. The goats have been the most public issue. I personally have a friend that lives not too far away on the south side. There are chickens in her neighbor's backyard, and it's only maybe 10, 15 feet from her back door. Some of those odds are very, very small. I didn't move into the city to have farm animals. I don't want farm animals. I understand some people with the 4-H yell, I've got nieces and nephews, raise animals for 4-H and, you know, try to compete, but they live out in the country. So, once again, I think this code is a good idea. Whether feral cats are considered farm animal or not, that's up to you people. I don't know how you'd control it anyways. There's so many of them. I hope you do pass this code. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Rykowski. Seconded by Ms. Briggs. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rykowski.
Yes.
Council President Jankowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beal.
Yes.
Councilmember Pacino.
Yes.
Councilmember Canelli.
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. The Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, we want to go there, but we skipped out and addressed the animals. I think it'd be a little more cognizant if we do that.
Yes.
So we're going to bypass the normal order. We're going to go right to the amend municipal code to include restrictions on animals and file. Any comments from council? Mr. Knab.
Certainly did not expect this kind of turnout tonight, and I'm glad to see it. As you all know, on council, I also live in that neighborhood, so I recognize a lot of my neighbors here. Certainly recognized their concerns, as well as I recognize the concerns of the feral cat caretakers, and I also recognize the situation with the woman that has her chickens, and those have become her pets. If I could just address that one piece first, the chickens, if I'm not mistaken, we have accommodated ownership of chickens, but we have put a limitation on the amount of chickens you can have, so you can't have 25 chickens in your backyard. So we've addressed that issue for that purpose. The feral cats, interesting issue because we do have, I remember quite a few years ago, right?
Yes.
We gave our blessing to that organization that does the TNVR program and said, you know, go at it, help us take care of our problem, sounds like a great idea. I don't know if it's been a good idea or not, because I haven't gotten any feedback from that organization in a number of years. I see feral cats in my yard. Every now and then, they're worse, and then they're better, so I don't know if they're in my neighborhood working or not. But we put that in place, and I think that we would still have that in place, if I'm not mistaken. We could still allow them to do what they want to do, and, I mean, feral cats are feral cats, they're wild cats. But we kind of, through all of that, I guess, renamed them at some point in time, community cats. And I get that. I get that there's people that feed them, take care of them, and I'm an animal lover, so I'm grateful that these people are doing that, that they're taking care of our neighborhood cats that don't have a home. And that's why I thought this program, the TNVR program, would be something good for us to try, and I would love to continue having them do that. But I would love to have them account back to us and let us know, since they're working in partnership with the city, just like any other committee that the city has, I would like to know what the progress is. So we could, if we would have had that accountability from that organization throughout this period, we would have been better able to address the feral cat problem, because they would have said, you know what, let's not include the feral cats in there, because they're doing such a great job at what they're doing, that we've got the program under control, we don't have to worry about feral cats, doing really well. We don't know that. We don't know if it's working or not. We don't know if it's working or not, because we haven't had any feedback from the organization. So I would say, my recommendation is, let's keep the TNVR program in place, and by including feral cats in our law, that makes now the citizen that is feeding those cats and taking care of them, that puts them in an, in an accountability position. So we could easily say, anybody who is harboring, for a lack of a better term, harboring a community cat, if you're doing so, contact the DNVR committee to make sure that the community cats that you are taking care of in your neighborhood have gone through this program. So that would actually help us then to control the feral cat problem even more, because it would give a heads up to this organization that, "Hey, I'm taking care of these cats. I don't know if they've been spayed or neutered. Why don't you come down, do your thing, release them back in?" Now, that, that resident has already covered themselves at that point, and they've said, "Hey, I'm taking care of them. Just letting you guys know I'm taking care of them, but they're part of the TNVR program, so they're cool. We'll just leave them." So now they're really, I mean, a feral cat is, in my opinion, a cat that just wanders all over the place, just searching for food, just trying to survive. A community cat is, like we've heard tonight, part of some of these residents' life. I mean, and they don't go inside and sleep with them in bed like my dog does with me, but, you know, they take care of them, they, they've grown a relationship with these animals, and these animals obviously have, have felt some security being there. So in that case, the, it's not really a feral cat, it becomes a community cat. And community cats then would be covered if the resident that's taking care of them has reported to the TNVR committee that they're taking care of them, and then we know then they've gone through that program. So I think that that could all be worked out, and that would solve our feral cat, community cat issue with the people that are taking care of them. We don't want people, and that's why we start, we started this whole program originally, is the problem that we had is we had residents who were feeding feral cats. And we kept saying, "Don't feed the feral cats, don't feed the feral cats, because you're just creating more of a problem. They're not going to go away, we're just going to get more." And this organization that was doing the TNVR said, "Let us do our thing, and we'll solve that problem for you." So they won't be able to reproduce. So I think there's, there's, there's merit in that program. I'm not sure it's working or not, but I would, if I have to speculate, I got to speculate that it's probably helped some. So, and that would give us a little bit more control over that situation, and we'd have an organization coming back to us, like a committee reporting back to the, to the council every now and then as to what they're doing. Just like we have the city manager, give us a report, and the city, the city attorney gives us a report, we have committee reports, we could get some feedback. So, but anything else? I got to say to the people that say, "I don't really want this, but I don't really have a problem now," I say to you, "I will see you then at some point when your neighbor decides that he or she wants a cow." It happened to me when I was, when I was young, I grew up on Bank Street, and my neighbor decided that he was going to buy a pig, raise it in the backyard, right on Bank Street in the city of Batavia, and then have it slaughtered and pack his freezer with it. Great idea, but when you live next door to him, I was living next door to a pig, and my father at the time, who was not in politics at the time, complained about it, and for some reason back then, it was, there was a code at that point in time in the sixties that said you couldn't have farm animals. I, I haven't found it yet, but there must have been, because they came to the neighbor and said, "You got to get rid of the pig." And the next day, the pig was gone. So just bear in mind when you say, "Well, I don't have that problem now, and I don't think we should restrict this kind of thing in the city." If your neighbor decides that a cow is in order or a pig is in order, you'll probably end up coming to us and say, "Hey, I think that was a good idea. We should have done it back then." So I, just, you know, be, be careful of what you ask for. That's all.
I agree with Mr. Canelli about the cats, because they really can't tell if a cat is yours or not, because he's roaming around. So I have to agree with John on the feral cat issue, but what goes through one person's mind to have farm animals in the city? I don't understand it. I think if you want farm animals, you need to move to the town or get a season pass at the zoo and go visit animals. That's how I feel about it. It's ridiculous.
I also agree with Councilperson Canelli about the cats, about the feral cats. My thing is, we've got to do something about these farm animals. We should not have them in the city of Batavia. That's really, and these poor people on Brook Avenue, you're in my prayers. But really, I, again, I think we should be, definitely do something about these farm animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Feral cats are, cats in general are invasive species. They cause an immense amount of damage to the wildlife, the songbirds, small rabbits, other animals. Every, every national environmental group decries the fact that cats, feral cats, are not, are not to take care of. They, they have caused so much damage. In my book, feral cats stay on the books with the farm animals, and they need to be eradicated.
Yes, I have a lot of concerns. One, I'm not going to support any of this, because I can't support any ordinance that interferes with ADA or with New York State disability laws for companion animals. And to tell anyone with a handicap to need an exemption, well, maybe I'd just tell them, "Go get an exemption to be handicapped. This isn't something they chose," and I certainly wouldn't want to put any stigmas on anyone. I would like to see everything done to help people and make their lives as independent as they can be. But the other thing I have some concerns about, all this is over one home, one home, one piece of property that we're passing laws, we're going to have ordinances, everybody, all these people have showed up, and this hasn't been resolved. Letting wild, letting large animals roam the streets, it's a public nuisance. Accruing manure in your yard, it's a health department issue. You know, saying that the people on Redfield should know it and they have to smell it, well, the track has really improved a lot of it since, in the last few years. It used to be a problem, "I live on Union Street, yeah, we can smell manure." And the gentleman was right. We bought the house knowing that. But it's not a big problem. In any event, my, I have other concerns, and one of them is, the racetrack's automatically exempted. Well, that's because of money, obviously. There's a lot of money involved, and the racetrack was here forever, so they're exempted. But I think this whole ordinance needs to be gone through. What about children that want to have a little rabbit? They want to raise a rabbit for 4-H? Well, you can't have a rabbit, but somebody next door, they're going to be allowed to have chickens, but you can't have a duck, and is a duck worse than a chicken? Oh my God, it makes my head hurt just thinking about this. I've done some research also, but I do know one thing. Cats, any kind of cat, really keeps the number of mice and rats under control. When you start eliminating cats, watch the mice and rat population increase. The other problem I have is, I see domestic cats in my neighborhood coming into our yard, the neighbors' yards, I've had complaints, killing the birds and tearing up the flowerbeds and using those for their littering. So there isn't really, when it comes to tearing up flowerbeds and killing birds, domestic cats can be just as vicious as feral cats. I had a complaint the other day about some cats tearing up a flowerbed, and I said, "Talk to your neighbor. Address the problem. Go say, 'Hey, can you try keeping your cat in?'" I've done it. I've talked to the neighbor. "Please, try keeping your cat in. He's killing birds in my backyard." It's called addressing the problem. We have all these agencies. We have police, we have county health department. You know, we have several departments that could put a stop to this, and everybody just seems to be kicking the can down the road. For this to go on, I mean, what, goats to be roaming neighborhoods and no one doing anything, it's just, I can't believe it. So I'm not supporting any of this, and, and listen, it's totally rewritten. Thank you.
Okay. First of all, George, you want to cover the ADA section?
Yeah, please. Council President, members of council, as we indicated last time, the protections that would exist under the ADA or their provisions of state or federal laws that relates to handicapped exist as a matter of those state laws or federal laws. They are not as a matter of course incorporated into local zoning codes. We looked at various other local codes related to wild animals and farm animals, and as we indicated, they are not picking up sections of the ADA or New York State human rights laws and adopting those as a matter of course into the local zoning code. The simple fact is, those protections exist because of those provisions of state and federal law. And if there's a covered person who's entitled to the protections, they will have those protections. But as a matter of course, you don't, as a municipality, go forth and adopt them independently into your own local zoning code. It'd be like adopting the ADA as part of the building code.
It's a federal code.
It's not done. It's a matter of preemption. Those provisions and protections exist. So to suggest otherwise, that somehow by not carving it out and not making those specific conclusions that were suggested by a single-purpose entity who's supporting those interests, it is somehow infirm, is just simply not the case from the research we've done.
So the misunderstanding of us superseding the ADA and blocking companion animals that are under that authority is wrong. It's not going to happen, it can't happen, and we don't need to incorporate it in this. It automatically supersedes anything we do here, correct?
As long as they're covered persons with those protections, yes.
Okay. Secondly, we've been trying to work this out for almost eighteen months now. The owner of the house himself has come up here and spoke at the public hearing and said, "I think it's a good ordinance." There's other concerns going on within that household, not at liberty to discuss, but that should tell you something right there, that the owner of the house is saying, "I don't want goats in the city." Okay, so we've tried. We've tried everything. The health department isn't ignoring us, they don't have any authority. The police department isn't ignoring us, they don't have any authority. I agree with Bob. I don't like to just legislate for the sake of one incident, but I believe the code is missing, there's a gap in the code, and it's missing that ordinance on there, and it probably should have been in there a long time ago, but it never came to life. So I think at this point, it needs to be corrected, and it needs to be fixed. So that's why I'm looking at for that respect. Totally agree on the cats. I think we're out of line on the cats. I would suggest that, and I, I could, I should move right now, I will move right now, that we either will discuss this, we either strike that and we cover it in a separate ordinance at a later date in time to include the response from the animals, the people who do this for a living, who volunteer their time, and they, they should be brought into that discussion and should be separate. Or we can carve out that if the person is feeding community cats, that they need to work in conjunction with the people who are neutering and capturing and releasing and vaccinating. Because in the past, we have had people that have said, "I'm feeding these cats, I don't know who they are, you can't arrest me because they're not mine, they're stealing my cat's food that I put out for my two cats." But there's like thirty cats there, and they wouldn't cooperate with the neutering and the vaccination program. They wouldn't cooperate. So we were stuck in a dilemma. We couldn't do anything about it, we couldn't pin the animal ownership on them, but we couldn't force them to comply. So if you wanted to either A, remove it totally, or B, incorporate something in there where they must be, like John said, part of the neutering program and work with them volunteers, so then they'd be under the umbrella of the volunteers, and they wouldn't be just feeding animals without some kind of coordination to resolve the problem. So I think a double team on that, with working with them and feeding, but not just letting random feeding, that could be another option. So at this point, we've tried to talk, the neighbors have made it very clear at many meetings that there's a problem, and they didn't have to go over there to talk to them about it. And when they tried, they got the middle finger and swearing and treated it properly, and the animals have been loose every day since we've had our last meeting. So I suggest, if someone wants to do that, pick one of those or discuss on that further. There's a motion on the floor. I make a motion that we either modify that section to either they work with the neutering program, or we just pull that out totally and we, we address it at a later date in time in a separate ordinance. So do I get a second on that to at least discuss that?
A second.
Okay. So now it's up for discussion. How do we want to modify the cat or not at all? How do we want to do that? Do we want to just strike it and address it later? Because it is technically a separate thing, as I pointed out.
Yes. Yes. Pull it out and address it later. We've got that problem.
We'll better job on it.
Yeah, I think we can fix the cat part, and I think we can work along with the volunteers and maybe shore that up, or maybe just, it never gets brought back, it never gets put in at anything, maybe it's just a bad idea. But this was something we talked about for several meetings now, it started back in January. I'm just disappointed that we finally got input on the cat part now, because we could have, we would have corrected it a long time ago. I would have brought it up to correct it a long time ago, personally. But that's okay. We're here, we got the time, we can do it, we still are within our timeframe to do this. So if we want to do that, we want to make that modification, and if we vote to do that now and to move that, then I will schedule a public hearing so that we can get that in there. We'll have another public hearing, then it'll go through the process. So it will delay us by a couple of weeks, but I'd rather do this right, do it right the first time.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will this be something we'll get addressed, so we can have some input before we have another public hearing?
Of course. We'd have to.
I'd like to, I'd like to have some more input.
Yeah. How does, how does everybody feel about, so let's, we're hedging towards a point of removing it totally and addressing it.
Yes, removing it totally and addressing it later.
Let me just say this, though. Would we, would we be missing our opportunity at this point to also address the feral cat problem? And let me, let me expound on that a little bit. We had, we have, we have a deer population problem in the city, and so we discourage residents from feeding deer in the city to help us to alleviate that problem. I fear that the feral cat problem, if we just ignore it, and eventually it's going to, it's, it's going to come up again, where all of a sudden, there's going to be a neighborhood that comes to us like they did last time and said, "The feral cat problem in our neighborhood is out of hand." That's what made us make the move at that point. That was the catalyst that made us realize we have a problem we need to take care of, and we have to address it. Are we missing the opportunity now? If we incorporated this, then it requires those people that are taking care of the community cats, it requires them to work in conjunction with the TNVR people, so we can hopefully even improve our feral cat situation. And I'm just saying, this might be the opportunity to, to get these people to work together for the, for the betterment of the community and the betterment of the treatment of these animals, rather than just allowing people to just throw food out on the front porch or their front yard and let the feral cats be, you know, go at it, and hopefully these TNVR people are on it, but maybe they aren't. Maybe they don't know there is a problem arising. How are they going to?
If I may, technically, dogs and cats are more on the domestic side, so we're putting a domestic animal to farm animals.
And I get that, too.
So I'm thinking, we can set the agenda, I will put it right on the next agenda, we can address it subsequently, but I think we need feedback from those experts that do it. If you look at, if you looked at the PowerPoint that they included in an email to me, and I'm sure we all got it, one of the big things there were feeding bans do not work, and that was the presentation we got in 2015, and they came here and talked to us about it. So for us, for me to hear and speculate and say, "This feeding ban in conjunction with them," it might just be a burden on them, and they might, so I think we need more feedback. I think we need to carve that out and do more due diligence on research on that section alone. It's kind of apples and oranges. We got domestic animals, we got farm animals, we're lumping in domestic.
I just wanted you to see another side of it.
And that's why I mentioned both of them in the ordinance.
Because I'm thinking, too, we could, and my, my inclination here is to remove it, let's get it right out of there right now, readdress it, and maybe this is the, this opportunity here is the catalyst to get back with our TNVR people and say, "Okay, let's have a little bit better communications, let's work together," just to make sure that the feral cat problem does not become a major issue again.
Right, right. We need an update.
I definitely think we need more time to think on it. For one thing, I'm wondering how we're going to monitor who is actually going to the deer we are and who is just feeding cats. We haven't, we haven't thought of that. We don't can monitor that. We need more time to think about it.
And I agree, because I, over, over time, as I read through things and thought about things, I thought the same thing. Well, we're saying, we're kind of saying cats are a farm animal. Well, they are. Most farms have cats, but they're also a domestic house pet.
We're lumping it in with the wrong ordinance, and I think it was an afterthought, and it was a, it wasn't intentionally to punish anyone. It was like, an opportunity is there, let's throw this.
We just thought, hey, this might be an opportunity to control our feral cat problem.
And we were trying to be helpful and, and without asking the experts, and it happened, and we made a mistake.
I agree.
Our making should be, I know, our making should be.
Farming.
Yes. Let's not try to lump too much into this and keep it simple. So, so the, we're, I would suggest that we're, I guess we're getting the impression that we want to remove it for later discovery.
Yes, yes.[1782.71]
So how do we do that? Take a vote on?
Well, you already had a motion. You had a second on that vein of what you proposed. I would suggest you take the vote of the entire council to remove it from this proposed draft.
Okay, so we will take a vote. We'll call the roll. It's yes to remove it, no to leave it in. Okay? Because that's what we're asking to do is to remove.
Yes, to remove the feral cat situation.
Right.
Correct.
The feral cat part of the ordinance gets totally removed. We'll address it at a later time. Call a roll, please.
Council President Jankowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Veely.
Yes.
Councilmember Pacino.
Yes.
Councilmember Canelli.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuinness.
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Byakowski.
Yes.
Okay. So that gets stripped, struck from that. So that's a major change, correct, Eric?
Well, pared it down. You haven't added anything. You pared it down.
So do we need to get another public hearing? Or can we just?
At this point, it's, the scope was as expansive as it could possibly be relative to the animals to recover. You're now pairing it back.
So we're doing less and we're not expanding it or reducing it?
Correct. I think if you want to move forward instead of the business council meeting to take action on the existing law with that amendment, you can probably do so at this time, given the scope of the comments that were put forward.
Right. Okay, so at this point, then, with that modification, are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting, which would be next meeting on the twenty-sixth for the final vote on the animal part of it? Now, the cat part has been stricken.
Yes. So at the twenty-sixth, we would be going for about?
The whole ordinance with the cat part removed.
Okay. Remove primates. Remove primates.
Is that, are we in consensus to do that?
Can I ask a question? What's TVNR stand for?
Someone from the audience?
So TNVR stands for? Hi, I'm Robin for Volunteers for Animals. TNVR stands for the calling. T is for trap, and it's for neuter or stray if they're female, vaccinate, and release.
Okay.
So Bob, your turn.
No, I was just going to say myself, I'd like to see some coordination within the independent little household plan so that they can back and support it before we vote for it.
Well, we can have somebody contact them, but I mean.
They've already come and added two or three times. They've submitted a letter. They've appeared in a council meeting. They've appeared at a public hearing.
Well, we want to let them know our standing that we don't feel we need to add it in there because it's already covered by federal and state law. We don't need to reincorporate it in our.
I don't think that's an obligation in council.
You've done your job.
We've talked about it publicly enough. If they listen to this meeting or look at the minutes, it'll be obvious that we've said this numerous times, that our intention is not to affect that, those laws whatsoever, and we have no authority to affect those laws whatsoever. So the companion part of it and the ADA and all that is beyond our scope. We're not going to affect that in a way.
We need to move forward with that.
Okay, so we're all in consensus to move this modified to the business meeting for the final vote minus the feral cat requirement.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward. Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan Presentation.
Give him a minute.
Watch your head, please.
Little cats.
Watch your head.
Right now, I'm going to just, I'm going to start me.
I gotta leave any of them. My walls. The Chinese power.
Me, too.
Okay, all right. Is there like a small break or something, or?
Where are we going?
No, I don't know. No, no.
Really? Do we think that's fair?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We got, we got a concern about the farm animals.
I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to die on farm animals, on the cat ordinance.
No, no, no. Farm animals is most likely.
Feral cats are likely.
Yeah, we're going to work on it the next meeting.
We're going to work on it. Right now, they got to.
I'm going to put it on the next conference agenda and start right into.
I understand.
Into the presentation.
Yeah, I just want to drop it. No, I don't want to. We don't want to make another ordinance. Look into it.
Okay. Do you have any time to wrap this up?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, good evening. Police Chief and I are here to talk about the SEP review and update that we currently just did. The SEP is the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. It's required by New York State Law Article 2B. And essentially is just a playbook of, and a guideline to help us mitigate any type of situation. Some major sections are the SEP itself, which basically establishes authority to, legal authority to act, establishes roles and responsibilities. It has a hazard vulnerability analysis. Makes us look at what we have in the city and what the vulnerability is. Has a training component and continuity of government.
That's good. That's good. Yeah, that's good.
The other major section is the Incident Annexes. Basically gives us direction, how to declare an emergency because that's very specific. Establishes emergency notification. The city facilities all have emergency action plans. Basically, what happens in an emergency at specific buildings. Just a little bit of a side note, when we first put this in service in 2015, there was very few city buildings that had public access to fibrillators. Now, pretty much all of them do. So basically, what to do in an emergency, much like a fire safety plan, a meeting point if there was a fire, active shooter-type situation, gas leak, anything like that. So all the employees will be trained on their emergency action plan and what to do in case of an emergency. A couple of things that were blank pages in the SEP, this past one, was a pandemic response. The city manager told me that when the pandemic was at its height, she turned to the SEP hoping for some directions, and it was a blank page. One of those things that you kind of hope never happens, but it did. So we developed one, or I didn't really, Chief and city staff at the time, developed a pandemic response, and now that's inserted. Other things, civil unrest, we didn't have. We had a blank page on civil unrest. That's now inserted in there. And all of this, again, was a part of the strategic plan that was set forth. Basically, how we got there is the police chief and, or our previous chief started meeting monthly, did a comprehensive review of the whole plan and really a page-by-page overview of what the SEP is. We deleted some content, some content that was, felt that was really unnecessary, too much in depth. It's, the SEP is meant to be a very high-level overview of what should occur in an emergency. We updated some content. We had a lot of, you know, a fair amount of turnover in the last few years, making sure that the contacts for the city departments were up to date. We're going to be reviewing some incident command system training for all city employees. Just kind of revisit that. And we merged some sections together that we felt were better suited. Again, we added the pandemic response, the civil unrest section, and the terrorism. Again, we hope never to use that, but it's there. Again, with the turnover.
Chief, just a quick question. Are you going to teach an actual ICS course that'll qualify everyone in ICS law?
We're going to manage it. We don't necessarily teach it. There's a lot of stuff online that, through a national framework, so everybody's getting the same training. So there's, you know, we're going to start, we're going to have the building blocks, and then different levels of city employees will have more advanced training versus the basic training for all city employees.
So the plan is outlined now, get that to the department heads, and the department heads can, you know, set aside that training or update that training if necessary, as well as you folks as well, because there is some specific courses that elected officials are to take as well.
So will employees, any employee that wants to, can they take the online courses like 800 or whatever?
Correct. Yep. You know, police and fire are pretty more, we're much more in tune with that because we get that through the training academies and whatnot. It's just with all the turnover, we just have to catch up to that.
And there's nothing that prohibits somebody from taking other courses if they're interested in doing some.
Well, it's not facile, so they can go online. They have the availability to take the courses.
Yeah, Rachel wants to take one like three times.
There's a ton of courses out there that we just have to collaborate on.
How are you doing, Rachel?
So the next step is we're putting some finishing touches on some typos and just formatting. The next step, major step, is going to be to in-service the leadership team and really empower the department heads to train their supervisory employees on the use of the SEP. Again, implement this, the training that we need to catch up on. Every year for the CRS, we have to do a tabletop exercise, so we kind of utilize the SEP in that form. So it really gets our heads in the SEP and just, we do some EOC training, which is Urgency Operations Center. This is the EOC, the designated EOC. So in other words, everything comes through here. It's like the brains of the operation, basically. And then really, the department head involvement is more or less really kind of tasked them with helping us to update the plan. We made some fillable PDF forms and just making sure that we're keeping up on all the contacts. And any changes that they see, they feel necessary. It's just a means for us to talk about it and perhaps update it as we're going. It's really a living document.
And just to reference, this is a copy. We're not going to give this to everybody, but this is a copy of it. All the department heads will have access to one. There'll be an online one as well. And I'm not sure how Rachel plans on getting that to you guys, but there's a distribution that will take place and involve all the elected officials. We're the ones that certainly need it.
The tabs are all in typos, so. But that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, didn't we just go through the COVID response? Wasn't that like a minor? Yeah, it was more of a state month thing, but we all had, we were under state emergency. Everybody had their roles and things were, you know, the protocols were changed to allow us to expedite certain purchases and whatnot, so.
This is just a very broad, it's not, I hate to say it, it's not meant to be followed to the letter of what's in the SEP. It's just a framework of, something that goes you to give us some guidance.
This is important.
The pandemic wasn't perfect. We didn't have anything. We kind of managed that on the fly, personally.
But it wasn't like in a major incident, like it was a 24-hour thing. This was like a prolonged, slow, and we had plenty of time to get up to speed and keep up with the challenges. But I think you're talking like, you know, a train wreck or some major incident involving the city where there's a big catastrophe, trees all down, wires down, you know, heaven forbid. Then we were going to be in like a state of confusion for a couple of days, and I think that's where these really come into play, I think.
Yes. Absolutely.
Yeah, it outlines the steps to follow to declare a state of emergency. The proper paperwork to file is in there. Outlines who is in charge of what the different sections go to be, and then, you know, you follow the ICS functions in those emergencies.
Right. And everybody knows where their role is, and then there's more implication. And then we just.
That's the plan.
Yeah, that's the plan. Any questions? Any comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rachel, do they have any other presentations?
There are not, thank you, Council President. We're going to go ahead.
Yes. All right. Any, no other questions on that? Okay. Septage hauler rate.
Thank you, Council President. Discussing the septic hauler rate, the city had a meeting with DEC a few months back to review the status of the wastewater treatment plan and listened to recommendations. One regarded septic haulers and the fee we charged because of the high concentration. And Frank, take it from here.
Yeah, so basically, at this moment in time, we've been charging four cents per gallon. It's been recommended by DEC to either move that to 10 cents or 15 cents per gallon. So we're moving to charge as high as we recommend it. We're going to go to 15 cents per gallon, which ends up being $150 per thousand gallons. Along with doing that, we are recommending that we also, when a septic hauler comes in, we're going to charge them for full load, whether they bring in 200 gallons or they bring in 2,000 gallons. So we charge 15 cents per gallon and for full, full tank every time that we do that. Looking to do that immediately with the idea of eventually, hopefully, some point, getting out of the septic hauling business because it really does benefit the city in any way. City taxpayers are subsidizing that because all that septic waste is coming from out of town. So the idea is to increase that rate from four cents a gallon to 15 cents a gallon.
How are we going to know if they're going to normally come? Are we going to give them some notice?
Oh, yeah, already taking place. We've recommended that at the wastewater treatment plan, when a septic hauler comes in for the first time, go right out, meet with the truck driver, tell them exactly what the plan is. It's going to go from four cents to 15 cents, and every single time that you come, you will be charged for a full load. So.
Any questions, sir? Are we in consensus to move that to, is this this or not?
Future business.
To the future business meeting?
Yes.
Make it's move. Jackson Square redesign.
Thank you, Council President. After two failed bid attempts, I'm recommending that the city engage Architects Unlimited LLC to reengineer the project. Architects Unlimited is a licensed architectural professional service firm that has completed multiple projects on behalf of the city, including the Mall Roof One, Mall Roof Two, and the Police Station Roof. They are currently working with us on the police station as our owner's representative. After we did have the two failed attempts to get bids to come in at cost, I asked them to do a cursory look at the project, and they found many different ways where they could still keep the intent of the project for a community gathering space with stage and some aesthetics, but to save us a cost and bring the project in on bid. The services, this will still be a part of the grant from Department of State and National Grid, and the total fee for this plus construction administration is $87,400, excuse me. So I recommend that City Council approve the accompanying resolution to engage the architectural services of Architects Unlimited for the Jackson Square project.
Yeah. Rachel, is someone from bid going to also be included in there so we don't go through the thing with the bandstand with the glass roof to bake the band in?
So there won't be a glass roof? That was already taken out of the project after we heard feedback in the beginning.
Okay, and everybody, everybody over there is happy?
At the bid, yep, they get regular updates from, I do attend bid meetings once a month.
Right. So they're all with the present design, and the design is pretty much set, so they're all?
The design has to be scaled back and reengineered, and that's what we're going to be paying for. So, yeah, but trying to keep them up to date through their meetings.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Rachel, are we, do we have any recourse against the previous bidder for saying their fault, no fault to ours? They misbid it, and now we're going through this process, and it's delayed like another year. Do we have any, now we have to hire another company at a large expense. Do we get any recourse back from this company for wasting our time like this?
So as a legal, George, do you want to respond?
We could discuss that at executive session if you like, Council President, but from a standpoint of talking about potential plans or things of that sort, I don't want to have that discussion.
Yeah. That's something I'd like to do. Where is this money coming from?
So the budget for the grant between the DRI and the National Grid grant is $975,000. So the budget for the grant between the DRI and the National Grid grant is $975,000. So what we basically will be doing is spending slightly more on the design fees and slightly less on the construction.
Such a balance, huh?
At this point, yeah. It'll be, it'll still be a nice project, and we'll still be able to bring it forward.
Sorry, no problem.
You know, the concern I have is, you know, it's wasting our time, it's wasting our money, so I'd like to, I want to address that part too, because now the project is going here, and the cost of rebidding it and redesigning it is going up here. And it's like, we're losing our product. We're losing our nice space for gathering, and we're paying less money for the actual gathering part and more for side fees and whatnot, so.
Luckily, the BDC was able to bring in $225,000 from National Grid to the project. That wasn't there originally when the DRI was awarded. So I do think we'll have a very architecturally sound project that comes in on bid, and I have a lot of faith in Architecture Unlimited and the work they've done with us in the past.
Sorry, we didn't start with them in the first place, but that's all there is sometimes. Any other questions there? Okay, so we are in consensus to move this then to the future business meeting?
Correct.
Okay, it's moved. Streetlight purchase?
Thank you, Council President. As you've heard through presentations that we've done over the course of the last year, year and a half, the city has invested in replacing all city-owned streetlights with LEDs. If you've been on the major thoroughfares through the city, you've seen those. The lights look uniform. They're the same Kelvin tempshere, so it's very nice to see. We still haven't finished the downtown, which will be done in the near future. But the remaining 948 lights in the city, mainly in our residential neighborhoods, are owned by National Grid, and we have the ability to purchase those lights through a program that National Grid has done with many other municipalities, and to replace all of those lights with LEDs, again, with the 10-year warranty for each of those lights. And as part of the city's electric bill, the O&M charge would go away from our National Grid bill, and that would pay the debt service on these lights. So I recommend that City Council approve the resolution authorizing the City Council President to execute the purchase and sale agreement and the light attachment license agreement.
Any questions or concerns? I just have one, George. You've looked over this multi-page contract. Are you, I mean, I briefed through it, but I had a pounding headache in about five minutes. Can you give us your blessing that it looks good? We're not getting in any trouble there with that agreement?
Not specifically. It's a standard formal agreement from National Grid to do this. It's pretty much an adhesive contract. You're not going to negotiate terms. The terms are very favorable to National Grid. We're indemnifying that. We're taking that. There's insurance requirements under the license agreement. It's a National Grid document, to be sure.
So you've seen them before, they're?
Yeah, I mean, they're owners. It seems significantly overblown for what's at issue, but that's how they operate.
So, anyone else? Go ahead.
The only thing, and I try to, I have the same headache, trying to read through it. The only thing I noticed is that the city will now have to trim the trees by the lights. But National Grid trims the trees by the wires, and the wires are by the lights. So is there going to be a dip, like if there's a branch sticking out this way and it's going to go by a light, do we have to trim that one, and they're going to trim all the others?
I think we already do work hand-in-hand with National Grid tree trimming, so I don't think that would become an issue. Most of the lights I see aren't blocked by trees and where their positions are. But if we did need to do some extra tree trimming for those lights, we certainly could. But I don't see that being a major issue, Brett, do you?
No, not at all, because you're going to hit power lines before you ever hit those lights. So in most cases, those are going to be trimmed before they're ever at that height. So nine times out of ten, it's going to be National Grid's.
From some point, they almost have to wrap around the power lines to get over the street to actually affect the light. So unless a branch fell or a storm, and then it would be a totally good.
Exactly, yep.
Anyone else? Good question, though. Anything, okay, so we're all in favor for that to go to the next business meeting? Okay. Seeker with the grid light?
Thank you, Council President. Associated with the National Grid, streetlight purchase and sale agreement is a type 2 action that basically states that it will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment when it's related to the purchase of these lights.
Any questions on that? So are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting as well?
Yep.
Okay, it gets moved. The application for the Restore New York?
Before you, you have two resolutions for a Restore New York grant application for the Cars building. The first resolution is to approve the city to apply for the grant on behalf of Cars. And the second resolution is to set a public hearing, and Eric will explain more about the project.
Yeah, so what you have, Council President and Council members, this is the sixth round of Restore New York grants. It's open up this fall. The deadline for that is October 12. We're proposing is that the city be the sponsor for the grant for the Car 301 building, which is a member of the DRI, is in the GOA. They are expanding the project since last presented. There's a DRI committee that's going to include the parcel on Jackson Street. So if you remember the old Cars building when you were in there, it's like the children's section, which has had multiple tenants since then, to include commercial space on the first floor and market rate apartments on the second, third floors of that. We're looking for municipality of under 40,000 can apply for up to $2 million, so we're looking to do that for this project.
And I just make a note for Restore, we've been successful with the Harvester Campus obtaining a Restore grant, and most recently with the Severino project, obtaining a Restore grant. And the onus of the performance of the grant is on the grantee, which would be the private business. We're more like a pass-through. We endorse that this project is significant and that we'd like to see redevelopment.
Any questions on that? So the way I look at this, we move the grant project to a next business meeting. The next item is actually going to be scheduling the public hearing, correct?
Correct, and we'd hope you could move that to tonight's business.
Right, so right now, are we in consensus to move the project to the next business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, there it goes. And then now we'll talk about the public hearing. You want, you know, we can schedule, or is there something you want to present first, or you just set the schedule to it and move it?
We should set the schedule order, right?
Just wanted to make sure you didn't want to add anything. So are we in consensus to schedule the public hearing, and we will move that to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved. Fire department, firefighters grant.
And Chief, if you'd like to explain this grant?
Sure.
What's all you?
The fire department was awarded a $62,476 grant. It was broken up into two major categories, training and equipment, specifically turnout gear and tuition for the fire training academies that we're putting all of our new members through. So there's $36,000 allocated to the training, $26,476 for the turnout gear, and that's with a 5% match, which is $3,123. The total package will be 65 and change with our input.
Yeah, so the 62 plus the 31, 20, 31, 81.
Yep.
Any questions on that?
Chief, after this grant, will all the turnout gear be within the timeframe? It won't be expired?
Currently, right now, everybody's primary set is within the NFPA 10-year requirement.
Okay.
There is a huge push for cancer prevention. Most of our members have a second set of gear, so when we have a fire, immediately is disassembled, washed in our washer extractor. And they, you know, obviously, we're on duty, so we have to have, have to have gear to go into. So this will certainly help out with that second set of gear being within that 10-year. We just, we feel that some of the gear is past that 10-years, but it's worth it to keep it, to keep the gear clean. It's not meant for them to be in it for, you know, a couple shifts. It's meant to be until their gear is cleaned and dried, and they get right back into their primary set.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
It gets moved. Police traffic services grant.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council President, and the members of council. Each year, as you are aware, the police department applies to the New York State Governor's Traffic Safety Committee for a police traffic services grant, which is funded over time for details and special patrols that, with the goal of increasing seatbelt usage and reducing dangerous driving behavior. We did receive funding this year in the amount of $13,464 for those details. And as takes place, I believe if you remember a couple of years back, it requires the council president's signature instead of just a department representative now. So we're asking that that move is tonight's business meeting for that signature, as the date of implementation is October.
Any questions or concerns? Are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved. Tracy Avenue easement?
Thank you, Council President. You have before you an easement for Tracy Avenue. The city is desirous of removing a tree located at 111 Tracy Avenue in the amount of $10,750, and I'll let Brett Frank explain any other details.
Yes, and we're asking for an easement at 111 Tracy Avenue. In the back portion of that property actually runs the Big Ditch, which is city infrastructure. And if there's a tree that not only serves, well, is going to be an issue to the Big Ditch and potentially hazardous to that, but that tree is also hazardous to probably the surrounding properties. If that tree was to come down, it could have a huge issue with Big Ditch, which is a giant portion of the drainage system that runs all the way from Walden Estates all the way up to Tana Wanda Creek. So it's something that needs to be taken care of, and actually, that back portion of the property does not belong to the owners of 111 Tracy. It's actually an unknown parcel. So in order to do so, we need an easement in order to go in there, remove that tree, and also in the future, that gives us the ability to maintain the Big Ditch, city infrastructure that is on that residence, so.
How about if we just started Walden and drive your truck all the way through the Big Ditch?
Correct.
Correct. Any questions on that?
Yeah. Do you see any potential that property could be damaged as you're hauling the tree out, or?
There's always the potential for damage, but it's our contractor, AJ's Tree Service, who is not as stranger to dangerous or tough tree removal situations, so have full confidence in them that they can go in there and have the necessary equipment to get in there and get that job done.
I'm more concerned about the, after the tree's cut down, I'm sure they'll do a great job, but hauling the lumber out, log shot, they'll have to use vehicles to haul it out.
Yeah, that'll be the easy part. Our, our, to get it down, the hauling should be no issue at all for them.
Okay, good, thank you.
I would assume we repair any?
Yeah, restoration of vehicle will be part of the contract.
Better than the last thing where weeds were growing out on other streets for other municipalities. Not the utility, but we still have to check on that. I got, that just reminded me. I'll leave my note. I'll talk to you about it afterwards. Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you very much. I've worked with the lady who lives at 111 Tracy, who's been working on this problem for some years, and she's very grateful that we did something about it. So thank you very much for the work.
Rachel, can I just ask, did we get other estimates, or did we just take one estimate? I don't know. I had trees taken down there. Of course, I drove by there, and I had trees taken down that were that size that were way less expensive. So, I mean, it seems like a lot of lumber's on this one.
If you see that tree, that is, our guess is that it's going to be closer to $20,000, and they are probably the only tree company that's going to even go in there and do that, so.
But you did contact two others who declined?
Yeah.
Two others declined because they didn't want to touch the tree, yeah.
So it's in a unique spot where it's a special removal.
Oh yeah, and it's just the sheer size of it, and, yes, the house is surrounded.
Yeah, so I mean, is there any mishap, and the roof's going to be damaged or something? Okay, anyone else? Okay, so are we in consensus to move the easement to Tracy Avenue to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
The payroll insurance clerk?
Thank you, Council President. As you all are aware, we continue to search for a qualified human resources director, and Dawn Fairbanks' retirement is looming. To ensure that we have some knowledge transfer of certain portions of her job, including insurance and taking care of different aspects of employees, we find it necessary to create an employee payroll insurance clerk. The goal in creating this position is to ensure that the knowledge and skills and abilities are transferred to the position to maintain the day-to-day operations in the manager's office for all of the employees across the city. I'll let Dawn speak a little bit more to this process.
Yep, we have gone out in the past and advertised for the director's position with a lack of qualified applicants. We're asking that this position be created, like the senior manager said, just to keep the day-to-day operations moving. The hope would be, if this were your 2024, that there is being established a social services for the director's position, and at that time, the director's position could be built. I anticipate a retirement as May of 2023, so it's kind of important to get someone in here to make sure things keep running.
Any questions?
Yes, it's just a temporary position until the director's position.
No, it's not. We have two full-time staff members, and right now, we really have one and three-quarters staff members working. Kelly works a little bit beyond the part-time hours, the not-part-time hours. So the hope would be that you have the employee payroll insurance clerk, you'll have the director, and then potentially in the future, you could have just a part-time HR clerk.
Okay, so what'll happen with the part-time person that's doing it now?
Her hours would be reduced at some point, once you have these two positions filled and things are running up to par.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? So are we in consensus to move the payroll insurance clerk vote to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
I'm in.
Mr. Beely? Seconded by? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Baikowski?
Yes.
Council President Jankowski?
Yes. Okay, I now call to order the regular business meeting. You've seen the July 2022 financials. Are there any questions or concerns? Anyone else? Are we in consensus to approve the July 22 financials?
Yes.
Okay. You've seen the August 2022 minutes. Any concerns there? Any omissions, corrections? So are we in consensus to approve the 2022 August minutes? Okay. There's several agenda items today. 77, 2022, the Restore New York Communities Grant Program, Mr. Canelli. 78, 2022, the Fire Department Grant, Mr. Schmidt. 79, 2022, the Police Grant, Mr. McGinnis. 80, 2022, the Easement, Ms. Pacino. And 81, 2022, the Payroll Clerk, Mr. Baikowski. City attorneys report?
Yes, members of council, as always, we've been able to work on a variety of matters across the spectrum, but there's nothing specific to report on this time.
Okay, any questions for the city attorney? City managers report?
I only have one item this evening. I want to thank the Batavia Police Department for giving me an opportunity to ride along with them this past Friday night. It was an extremely busy night with many calls, and I wanted to pass on my regard and praise to the officers and sergeants who work extremely hard to keep our city safe. And if any council member would like to ride along with BPD, please contact Sean and get it set up. That's all I have. Thank you.
We'll take the armored car out on a Friday night. Come on, Sean, let's have some fun.
Is it a bar robbing?
Yeah.
I just wanted to interject. Thank you, Chief, and back up with the manager. Considering all the activities and everything, just down the street from me, it was so nice not having any damage reports and... it was so nice not having any damage reports and a lot of commotion. And the problems we've had in past years seem to be all gone, so that was just great. Good job.
For Friday night, good. They worked really hard to get ahead of a few things this year, and I just want to give them all praise. And they work extremely hard in difficult situations with people who... They don't see people who are at their best most times, so.
It's like 33 years of it. Any committee?
One very quick one, because we talked about the line walk coming up. Please be aware that soon, there will be scarecrows all over downtown, too. They're best to be back, it's really a wonderful addition to the fall season.
Anything else? Unfinished business? I don't believe we have any. New business? 77, 2022, Mr. Canalley, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to schedule a public hearing for the Round Six Restore New York Communities Initiative Municipal Grant Program.
Seconded by Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canalley?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Baakowski?
Yes.
Council President Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 78, 2022, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I hold a resolution to amend the 2223 Fire Department budget to reflect the receipt of female assistance to private fires grant, AFG, in the amount of $62,476, $19,000.
Seconded by Mr. Canalley. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Baakowski?
Yes.
Council President Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Councilmember Canalley?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 79, 2022, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to amend the 202223 Police Department budget to reflect the receipt... Excuse me, of a Police Traffic Services grant.
Seconded by Ms. Briggs. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Baakowski?
Yes.
Council President Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Councilmember Canalley?
Yes.
Resolution 80, 2022, Ms. Pacino, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution approving an easement for property of 111 Tracy Avenue.
Mr. Beely, seconds. Any questions or concerns on that? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Councilmember Canalley?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Baakowski?
Yes.
Council President Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Resolution 81, 2022, Mr. Baakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to create an employee payroll insurance clerk position.
Seconded by Ms. Schmidt. Questions or concerns?
I'd just like to say this is a... This will be a good thing, so Dawn can retire and enjoy her retirement without being threatened to come back as a contractor and everything else, so quit her.
Okay, any other concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Baakowski?
Yes.
Council President Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Councilmember Canalley?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay. Think of some executive session?
Indeed. Whereas Article 77, Section 151 of the Public Office of Law, prevents the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City, which amends it.